I call this meeting the Upshur County Commission to Order. We have a moment of silent meditation and Pledge of Allegiance. It is followed by approval of the meeting from October 13, 2016.
Pledge of Allegiance. United States of America, and to great Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, in the fold with the freedom of justice for all.
Good morning, Jackie.
Good morning. The County Commission of Upshur County, West Virginia, held their regular meeting at the Courthouse in March on Thursday, October 13, 2016, at 9:00 a.m. Cherry Cut Right called the meeting to order. President of the Cherry Cut Right Commission, J.C. Rafferty, Commissioner, Troy Brady, Commissioner, Terry Wallace, County Administrator, Tabitha Perry, Assistant County Administrator, Javelin Hinkler, Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved the regular meeting minutes of October 6, 2016, with technical corrections. Laurie Aldrich Harvey, Upshur County Family Resource Network Director, appeared before the Commission and read the Unity Day Proclamation, which does enhance October 19 as Unity Day and November as National Bullying Prevention Month in Upshur County. The proclamation brings awareness and encourages all citizens to participate in the prevention of bullying in the community. Ms. Aldrich Harvey requested citizens to wear orange on October 19 in recognition of bullying prevention. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved and authorized signing of the proclamation. Terry Wallace provided an update concerning the responsibility of placement of the street sign as discussed at the October 6 meeting of the Upshur County Commission, during which Robert Ware, French Creek resident, expressed concerns about who is responsible for placement of the sign. Ms. Wallace advised that after researching the ownership of lots in the subdivision, it has been determined that the French Creek State's land developer no longer owns any tracks in the development, therefore per E-911 address in mapping order, Section 7.2, the responsibility of the placement of signage will now fall on homeowners, association, or property owners residing on the road in question. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved and authorized signing slash sending of correspondence to Robert Ware to inform him of the update. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved and authorized the president to sign the loan documents relating to the purchase of one 2016 Ford F-150 SuperCrew four-by-four vehicle for the Sheriff's Department. The loan will be in the amount of $31,434 and financed through Progressive Bank with an interest of 2.99%. After review and discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved Jordan Barnes as volunteer, I'm sorry, approved the Upshur County Emergency Communication Center policy and procedures for the retention and release of records and information. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved Jordan Barnes as volunteer intern for the Upshur County Office of Emergency Command. Cherry Cut Right, you're going to call in for your information items. Number one, press release, Atlantic Coast Pipeline Service Day to 2019. Two, West Virginia Courthouse Facilities Improvement Authority Fund, 13th cycle. Progress report for the Courthouse Group Repair Project. Three, newsletter sand or events, event notification, A revised coupon with the Nifty Lady Flyer 12:00 p.m. on October 17 at Grand W. Currie Public Library. Two, Bacchanal Police Department press release, Trump or Treat, October 28, from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., Abbey Public Safety Complex parking lot across from Jobbong Park. Next, 2016-2017 Upshur County four-H calendar, Bacchanal Upshur Chamber of Commerce newsletter, October 10, 2016, Dominion Transmission Incorporated Atlantic Coast Pipeline Project Update, October 2016, special edition. Four, addendums and our notice of meetings as listed. Five, meeting minutes as listed. Six, meetings as listed. Seven, appointments needed or upcoming as listed. The Commission approved all invoices for payment. The Commission approved all vacation orders. The Commission approved following settlements as listed. The Commission approved the following exoneration and/or refund as listed. The Commission approved the following request for attending meetings as listed. The Commission reviewed a request for a budget revision. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved a revision of the levy estimate. The request for revision to approve budget and resolution will be sent to the Office of State or Auditor for approval. The Commission reviewed agenda items for future meetings, received project updates, and discussed administrative business items. With no further business on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission meeting agenda will end 14th of April.
Thank you, Jackie. Jackie, did you change your brain?
Sorry.
Did you change your side?
Yeah, I got printed up.
I like the old.
We'll work on that.
Okay. Convert reading to Minnesota Raj meeting or any official corrections?
I don't have any corrections to this meeting minutes, so we're just red. However, I was contacted by Mr. Robert Ware regarding our October 6 meeting minutes, and he states that he takes exception with two of the bulleted statements. One being that Mr. Ware advised that during the addressing and mapping project, the street was renamed and no street sign has been put up, and he believes that the county should be responsible in requiring the developer of the subdivision to erect street signage. He states that no time did he say that the street was renamed during the addressing and mapping project. Secondly, Mr. Ware argued that the responsibility and cost of the sign should be the responsibility of the county and/or subdivision developer, not property owners, and requested the assistance of the Commission to request the developer to take, to place the road sign. He states that at no time did he say that the county was responsible for funding the street sign. He did say that no tax dollars should be spent on the sign. Also, he did not see any mention of the amount of money the county receives in the state to offset expenses of the project. I have asked Jeanie Zikafus to transcribe the portion of the meeting that he's referring to, and I would recommend that you would insert this into the law order book along with that meeting minutes and make the note of Mr. Ware's revision and the transcription. I did read over this, and at one point he says, "I do not think that taxpayers should pay for it." And then he goes on to say, "You're supposed to go back and say, 'Listen, you don't follow the rules. You've got to put a street sign up,'" and he's referring to talking to the developer there. And he also states, "But I'm asking this, please do not spend taxpayer dollars on it. Have the developer put up the sign as he should have years ago." So that is correct, that he didn't say that the developer should be responsible, not the county.
Do we need to vote to pick that difference?
Yes, please.
Second, all favor six and five saying aye. Those who know, ayes have, so will. Do I have a motion to approve? Second. All favor six and five saying aye. Those who know, ayes have, so will. Our next meeting is 9:15 a.m. with Joyce Harris Thacker, Upshur County Schools Graduation Coach, presentation of Red Ribbon Week Proclamation, October 24 through 28. At 9:30, we have Upshur County Tobacco Prevention Coalition, presentation of Great American Smokeout Proclamation, November 17, 2016. At 1 o'clock, we have public testing of the motor voting machines. For our 9:15 appointment, we'll move on with items for discussion, action, or approval. Item number one, review and signature of correspondence to Tony O'Leary, Community Development Representative, Enclosure Community Development Block Grant, Small Cities Block Grant Request for Payment for the Adrian PSD Phase 6 Water Extension. The total amount of drawdown requested, request number 14, is the amount of $16,683.30. Do I have a motion to approve? Second. Been moving second, all favor six and five saying aye. Those who know, ayes have, so will. Number two.
Would you like to postpone the approval of the financial statement, taking out some time to review it since you only got five minutes until the next appointment?
Okay, that would be good. We'll come back to that then. Item three, review and approval of volunteers' accident medical insurance enrollment request from 2016 in the amount of $235 on approval administrative period laws for signs and return. Is that one time charge of $235?
Yes, we are contacted by West Virginia Department. We get our renewal documents for FY '17, and they say that they offered this service. Very minimal fee for the insurance. It'll include accident medical limits at $25,000, deductible limits at $100, accident death benefit at $10,000, single dismemberment benefit at $5,000, and double dismemberment benefit at $10,000. And that will cover, we have around 200 volunteers that that will cover.
Do I have a motion to approve? Second, all favor six and five saying aye. Those who know, ayes have, so will. Item four, correspondence from Great B. Harris Upshur County State District and sites and portion will permit slash ordinance officer requesting that the Commission order cleanup of case number 09114-01. This property is located in Warren Tax District, Tax Map 6C, Partial Number 41, and is owned by Thomas Mose. Do I have a motion to approve? Second. All favor six and five saying aye. Those who know, ayes have, so will. Number five, correspondence from Joe Bailey, second, Chairman of Bacchanal Upshur Park Recreation Advisor, requesting the appointment of J.J. Corr to fill the current county appointed vacancy. That point approved, this fourth term will be effective July 1, 2016, and expire June 30, 2018. Do I have a motion to approve? Second. We have been moving second, all favor six and five saying aye. Those who know, ayes have, so will. Item six, approval and signature of correspondence to outside agencies regarding fiscal year 18 budget hearings. Do I have a motion to approve? Second.
Just to clarify, we have Country Ridge Transit, Upshur Cooperative Parish House and Cross Cleansing, Tri-County Child Exchange and Visitation Program, West Virginia Strawberry Festival, Southern Upshur Business Association, Drug Sale Community Fair, puzzle letters.
It's been moved, second, all favor six and five saying aye. Those who know, ayes have, so will. It's now 9:15. We invite our meeting with Joyce Harris Thacker, Upshur County Schools Graduation Coach, for presentation of the Red Ribbon Week Proclamation, October 24 through 28. Joyce, I saw you come in.
I keep looking, and I know that we have middle schoolers coming, and they are not present yet, but they should be here any minute, hopefully. I was just in a meeting with them today. This is, you're in for a retreat today.
Do you want, Joyce, we can go on with the agenda and have Kevin with you more minutes?
Just a couple more minutes?
Yep.
Well, we'll start by handing out some of our brochures for Red Ribbon Week, but this, the Red Ribbon Committee consists of, you know, all of our schools and staff and personnel, counselors, and lots of our folks who work in our school systems every day with our students. So they're, and our students are the stars of the show today, so.
Joyce, you may want to move. You're blocking the camera and goofy.
Are you saying the back of my head is not very attractive there, Mr. Brady?
I want to get everybody.
I will move out of the way.
Sorry about that, Joyce.
No, I appreciate it very much.
Yeah, we got him. Yep, we got him here.
My goodness, how lovely. And your hair.
Thank you.
Joyce, you need it for your copy? Do you need a copy?
Right, but you have it.
I think Lauren has it.
There they are. Let's just take some of these and pass them down. I'll start worrying about you. I haven't thought about this because I'm busy. Oh, yeah, look, we got crazy hair. I don't know what might be the best way to do this. Maybe we could get all of these up behind us. I think so. I think so.
They're looking at us, that's why.
Oh, the students are going to take care of that.
I think Charlie usually, are you going to do the introductory? Let's see if she can do it.
Please.
Good morning. I'm Tanya Zikafus, and I'm a counselor for Camden Academy Elementary. And I am just simply the member of the committee that wants to address you today before the students do. And I wanted to just remind you, I've talked with you before about Red Ribbon Week, and I wanted to remind you that it was established in 1985 in honor of a gentleman by the name of Enrique Camarena, who was the United States Drug Enforcement Agent, who was killed in the line of duty. Because of him being killed in the line of duty, his colleagues were so passionate and passionate about his death, they wanted to create something for the youth of the United States. Mr. Camarena was killed by drug traffickers. So each year, since 1986, Red Ribbon Week has been established and celebrated in the United States, and is now celebrated throughout the United States every year. We view our celebration as just one of many ways that Upshur County can focus on the work as being done to stop the further use of drugs and draw attention to our kids that are pledged to live a drug-free life. This year's Red Ribbon Week is next week, October 24 through 28. We have so many activities planned, but perhaps the most important thing that we're doing this year is making sure that we teach our children drug refusal skills so that they will have more than one way to say no throughout their entire lives when someone tries to get them to try some type of drugs. Our theme this year is YOLO. What does that mean, kids?
YOLO, Live Once.
YOLO Live Once, drug free. If you can understand that. And we want to present the themes to you, but the first thing we want to do is have one of our middle school students, or maybe more than one of them, read the proclamation to you. Something, have them come over now.
Whereas the Upshur County Commission values the health and safety of our citizens, and whereas substance abuse is particularly damaging to one of our most valuable resources, our children, and a contributing factor in the true leading causes of death for teenagers, accidents, homicides, and suicides. And whereas it is the goal of Upshur County Red Ribbon Week Campaign and Upshur County Commission to involve families, schools, businesses, and churches, law enforcement agencies, and service organizations in all aspects of the campaign and establish an atmosphere that supports awareness, education, and ongoing initiatives to prevent illegal drug use. And whereas Upshur County Red Ribbon Campaign theme promotes family and individual responsibility for living healthy and drug-free lives, without illegal drugs or the legal drug use of legal drugs, and whereas there are many activities planned during the Red Ribbon Week Campaign in Upshur County. The theme is YOLO, You Only Live Once, Be Drug Free. Now, therefore, the Upshur County Commission does proclaim October 24 through the 28, 2016, as Red Ribbon Week is Upshur County, West Virginia, and urge all citizens to join in the week's activities and to work all year long to protect our community from the dangers of alcohol and other drugs, given under our hand this 20th day of October 2016.
So the last thing we want to do, and it's really kind of a tradition for us to do this for you guys, we're all excited, we want to present the drug-free themes to you. So Monday is our YOLO Day, YOLO Live Once, Be Drug Free. So what color are we going to wear, everybody?
Red.
We're going to wear red. On Tuesday, it's LOL, Laugh Out Loud with Drugs. We wear the loudest colors we can find. Can those people stand up, please? On Wednesday, it's E123. It's easy as 123. Being on the drug-free team is easy as 123. It's our favorite team shirt day. You guys stand up? Thank you. Thursday is SMH, Shake in My Head, No Drugs. We wear crazy hair. I bet you you already know where these people are. Do you know what the lights? She is Mother Nature, maybe she is. And Friday is NPM, No Problem Man, I Don't Need Drugs. That's our ready each day. Okay. So we just really want to thank you for allowing us to share our passion about Red Ribbon Week with you and all the support that you give to our kids. We want to thank you for that.
Thank you for giving the, it's really hard for me to understand why anybody would want to start using drugs. If you look at the people that are using drugs, it's a road down, not a road up. There's nothing good can come out of it.
Will we get all of our kids up here? We'll get the children.
Okay. The proclamation, now a motion to approve. Second. All favor six and five saying aye. Those who know, ayes have, so will. Okay.
Cannot disturb kids. All of our adults, the, so. So everyone who's going to be supporting Red Ribbon Week, please stand up and come up with the commissioners or commissioners.
It's now 9:30. We have a meeting with Upshur County Tobacco Prevention Coalition, presentation of Great American Smokeout Proclamation, November 17, 2016. Joy, if you'd like to go ahead.
First thing I'd like to do is, we brought two vigil aids today. One is our fur jar, and one is our clam jar. So we wanted the two of you to actually read what's on the top of it to understand exactly what's going on. So we'll start with buddies. I just heard, are you guys warm?
A year's worth of tar. This symbolates tar represents the approximate amount of tar that passes through a smoker's lung each year from smoking half a pack of cigarettes a day.
And you see what's in there? Not that pleasant.
This one is clam's clam. This jar contains the amount of flim a smoker with COPD would cough up in about two weeks. That's nice.
That is the first time I've told people I want to put that on my desk. Well, that's gross, I said, that's the point. If it's on my desk, maybe someone will want to do it. But anyway, I just wanted to show you a little bit of vigil, and I think Dr. Reeve has passed out some information, or we've got information I think for you all, too. There's, right before I read it, actually, some of the statistics, one pack cigarettes a day at $4 a pack equals $58,400 over 40 years, plus eight years of life in relationships. So just one pack a day costs that much. And some of the reasons to quit, one is to save money, just like I said, how much actually passes through. It creates, it can create poverty in certain people if they continue to smoke that much. Secondhand smoke, that's one reason to get your family to quit because it affects you, it doesn't just affect a family member. Ways to quit, ask your pharmacist, your doctor, have a support network that's family and friends. Ask a friend who smokes to quit with you so you actually have a buddy situation. Avoid situations where you feel pressured to smoke, and learn to cope with the urges. It may seem like it takes forever, but it will one day pass. But I'll go ahead and read this so you can get moving on. Great American Smokeout, whereas the American Cancer Society encourages all tobacco users to join the Great American Smokeout and quit for at least one day. And whereas during 2009 to 2010, 54.2% of West Virginia adult smokers made quit attempts, ranking 29th among the states, of which some need to apply resources available to help them quit, such as local classes, telephonic lines, medications, and nicotine-replacing products. And whereas nearly nine out of 10 smokers began smoking before they were the age of 18. 18 to 24-year-olds have the highest smoking rates and are targeted by the tobacco industry as messages that smoking is a dangerous risk for young people. Research shows, however, that fewer youth start smoking in communities with smoke-free policies, such as our community. Whereas studies also show that smoke-free policies reduce heart attacks by as much as 30%, and efforts to reduce smoking and exposure to secondhand smoke in West Virginia have saved West Virginia's billions of dollars in healthcare costs. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed, the Upshur County Commission hereby recognizes and supports the American Cancer Society's Great American Smokeout on November 17, 2016. And Upshur County encourages all citizens who smoke, use, chew, or dip tobacco, or any other device to ingest nicotine.
Moving on to our item discussion, actual approval, item number seven, approval of Louis Upsher Allen Control Facility Capt report for September 2016. Item three, Louis Upsher Allen Control Facility Adoption Financial Report, September 2016. Item four, Upsher County Mileage Report, September 2016. Item five, newsletter and/or event notifications. Item six, agendas and/or notices of meetings. Seven, meeting minutes. Eight, meetings. Nine, appointments needed for upcoming. Our next meeting, the meeting of Upsher County Commission, will be October 27th, 2016, at 9:00 a.m. in the Upsher County Courthouse Annex. We have a spatial meeting of the Upsher County Commission, Wednesday, October 26th, 2016, at 1:00 p.m., Board of Assessment Appeals Hearings. Now, with that, we'll face the bill.
We need to go back to item number two.
Oh, that's right. Item number two, approval and financial statements, physical year ending June 30th, 2016. Good to give us a number for review of these.
Now.
All in favor of motion to approve?
Senator Mooney.
Second, all in favor of shaking five saying aye?
Aye.
But there's no eyes have.
Carrie, we need to sign both these books.
Oh, yeah, then we got.